Hey David.
Yeah.
Do you want to hand me your camera and let me see if... Okay. And can you hear?
Can you hear Chris?
Okay, I think...
Yeah.
Okay Sally's hearing us on YouTube.
Okay, perfect. So Sally, I have to give up my laptop in order to facilitate the livestream. So if anything goes wrong, can you text message me on my personal cellphone?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Alright. I don't want to give it out to the world, so I will email you. I think Karen also has it. Do I need to do something to record the livestream?
I can record it on YouTube. I mean on Ring Central.
Okay, and then we could post that.
Right now we haven't had anything recorded.
Okay, alright.
Okay, we have a member of Senator Kane's local staff here and that is our witness. I'm going to ask if he wants to have anything to say to us. Because right now we haven't... Good, okay, good. Karen, go ahead.
I think maybe Bruce could test it.
Yeah.
Bruce could see and...
Yeah, that's a good idea. Alright. Okay, for our many viewers online, which includes Sally, Karen, and also I think Katie. I'm going to see if we can get some talking going here. Okay, we are as good as we're going to get. We're actually live on Ring Central and we have no witnesses, so we would like you Bruce to be our first witness.
Absolutely.
And you have unlimited amount of time available.
Okay, I've got some other things I want to go up my chest too.
You can have it. At the lectern.
At the lectern?
Yeah, and let me ask Senator Kane.
Well, start a little bit about the problem and see what we can do. But if she wants to go, that's fine too, where I can seek into her.
Okay.
I can think of her here if you really want to.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Drop that David.
Oh, thank you. Say that they were, actually thank you for coming. Whereas with other technology, we're live on YouTube and Ring Central. And we have had some, so with Senator Kane, it's almost like my office. Anything about the hell knows about.
It was named after...
Alright.
Bruce, yes, with your revolutionary...
We're going to put you on as our...
And so you're good citizens of, you know, something, something.
You're going to be our only witness.
Okay. Some people may filter in, I had a couple people that were going to come that got tied up.
Yeah.
Bruce is paying good attention as they said.
Most of our witnesses so far have been attorneys and they much prefer after five o'clock. So I think that's part of the issue.
Five o'clock somewhere, yeah?
Yeah. That's what they say. Okay, I'm going to do an introduction.
Sure.
And we'll get started in a second. Okay, thank you very much for your patience. I think we are ready to actually say something here. And the technology just got in the way for far too long there. Good. I'm David Newmeyer. I am Chair of the EGAD Virginia Study Committee of the Virginia State Bar, looking at legal deserts and declining number of law graduates going into practice in Virginia. And with me is Andrea Bridgman, who will introduce herself. Could you...
Do you want me to do that now?
Yes.
I'm Andrea Bridgman. I am the Chair of the Virginia Supreme Court Access to Justice Commission's Committee. I'm not sure what our official name is, but we're calling it Listening Tours. We, in conjunction in rural areas with EGAD, are going around the state and convening sessions to allow the public and people from the legal community to comment on issues and problems that they've had accessing the courts, accessing attorneys, and with whatever else we can't even imagine, which is why we're having a listening session, so that we don't have to imagine. We can actually hear what some of the problems are. The commission was started by the court about 11 years ago. And actually, I look back at the recommendation from the study committee and it specifically mentioned outreach to the community to try to understand what obstacles the community is facing. So we tried to kick off this set of hearings in March 2020. Believe it or not, that never happened. So we reinvigorated that process. This is hearing number five, I think, out of...
Yes, well, we've done Northern Neck, Eastern Shore, Danville, so this is number four.
This is number four. We'll be in Grundy later today. We will be in Isla White. We will be in Woodstock. We will be in Lexington. And then in the, into the first quarter next year, we'll be doing some in more urban areas. Let me say for housekeeping, not that it makes much difference at this point. The door to our right is a fire exit. The restrooms are down the hall. And we're looking forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Also with us is Anne Klockner, who is a member of the Access to Justice Commission's Touring Committee. And she is based in Legal Aid Works in Fredericksburg. And Krista Gantz, who is the Staff Director for our committee and also for Access to Legal Services at the State Bar. And we have a member of our EGAD Virginia Committee here, Bruce Russell, an attorney in this area. I think multiple offices and I've been to the one at which, I've been at McCann.
Lebanon.
Lebanon, okay, that's where I've been, okay. And Bruce is also our only witness at the moment. Our marketing to area attorneys and community groups has not produced anybody else, but perhaps we'll do it better when we're in Grundy this afternoon at 3:45. So Bruce, in the meantime, is going to talk to us about access to justice in southwest Virginia. Thank you. And Bruce, if you would stand here, there are actually two cameras that are looking at you. One is on YouTube on your left and Ring Central is on your right.
Okay.
So you can, you can look to the vast audience or in between.
Great, you can just pretend that the hall is just full of people and talk to them. I'll avoid trying to stare at you all through the whole proceeding here. So well David, thank you very much and I'm very glad to be here. I wish we did have some more people who had come to share their observations on this very important topic. And these...
I'll follow you up.
Great, thank you, thank you. In these issues that are confronting us concerning larger population and legal deserts. Of course, we know, I'm going to talk just a little bit about the general problem, alright if I do that?
Please do.
Okay. So the problem is this with legal deserts. In Virginia, we have about 50,000 lawyers, roughly 50,000 lawyers. Of those, 35,000 actually practice law. And if you exclude, which we shouldn't exclude, but if you were to exclude your Fairfax lawyers, your Richmond lawyers and your Virginia Beach lawyers, I think most of the lawyers in the state, or the largest concentration of lawyers in the state are in Fairfax, northern Virginia area. Second is Richmond and Virginia Beach is not too far behind there. It used to be Richmond used to be the top dog, but in the last 30 years or so Fairfax has come to the front. But if you exclude those three areas, that urban crescent we've been calling it, entire rest of the state, we've only got about 3,600 lawyers, entire rest of the state. So if you look at it geographic, 10% of the landmass has 90% of the lawyers. And what that creates, of course, it also has most of the population. However, the problem that creates is you have these huge areas where no attorneys, attorneys are a good distance away, which creates an obstacle to access. Thank you for doing that, by the way. Or you also have the issue where there, even if there are attorneys, there might not be attorneys who are engaged in certain practice areas. Practice areas that once upon a time we would have thought of as core practice areas, particularly for, you know, your small shingle pipe lawyers out on the street. So I wrote an article in the Virginia Lawyer Magazine, the December issue, the December 23 issue. Henry Sue and I both wrote an article about the legal deserts issue. And it was a beautifully designed spread that I was very proud of my friend Dee Norman for putting together the layout of that, of that article, talking about legal deserts. And Henry talked about the larger problem of legal deserts nationwide and in the state. And I focused in on the problem here in southwest Virginia. And I talked about some specific examples of some contacts that I had had with folks who were seeking legal help, who could not get it or had difficulties, more difficulties than they should have had getting access to those legal services just because they were in these underserved areas. And I think I specifically talked about the person who contacted me and needed a will and couldn't get anyone to do a basic will. And this individual was located about two hours away, by the quickest route you could take to get to my office in Lebanon. So I was able to find help for that person, but I think sometimes people just give up and don't seek out help. Now, with our legal aid that we have here in southwest Virginia, southwest Virginia is a big place. And when I'm talking about southwest Virginia, I'm not excluding Roanoke. I do consider Roanoke to be southwest Virginia. But when we're talking about far southwest Virginia, when we're talking about the area that is served by southwest Virginia Legal Aid, you're talking about west of Roanoke. You're talking about Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and on down to Ewing, which is at the very tip of the state down in Leake County. But this is a geographic area that's about the size of New Jersey. And Joey Carrico and Southwest Virginia Legal Aid have that entire area out of three field offices. There's the main office and headquarters there in Marion. There's the field office in Castlewood, and then there is the field office up in Christiansburg. And they do that with a very small staff. And Joey and his staff do a great job stretching somewhat limited resources. But one of the problems that we have had with southwest Virginia Legal Aid in recent years is finding attorneys to work for southwest Virginia Legal Aid. Finding attorneys who are willing to come in and commit themselves to the noble work of that program. And the reason that we are having those problems, there are several reasons why we're having those problems. We do the most we can with the funding that we have with southwest Virginia Legal Aid. We have attorneys who work for Legal Aid when we're able to hire them for a period of time. And then they will leave and go try to seek fortune and glory in the private practice, just because there's potentially more money to be made in the private practice. But, and these attorneys are thinking, well heck, I'm working these long hours and I'm dedicated to these clients, why don't I cash in and get paid for it? But even then, it's, you know, very hard for, for these people to find these opportunities because generally they'll want to go work for another attorney for a period of time. And the attorney populations are shrinking. So I know, for example, in Russell County, we have several attorneys who practice over there in Russell County. Russell County is a very small place population-wise. People who are not from down here are sometimes shocked when they hear just how rural things are down here and how small the population base is in these counties. I know that just recently, Russell County, both Russell County and McCannon County, the populations have dipped below 20,000 for the first time in many, many years. Now, they weren't, you know, we're not talking about areas that have dipped from 200,000 or half a million people down to 20,000. But that's, that's a significant drop for these, these places and it's a trend. There's several reasons for that. Probably the major reason for that, and I would say the major problem that we are facing here in southwest Virginia, and I know Senator Kane is aware of this and Senator Kane's office is aware of this, as is Senator Warner and his Congressman Griffith, is just the economy. Because so many years, for so many years down here in southwest Virginia, we had in the coalfields and the areas around the coalfields, so much of our economy was dependent upon the coal economy. And you either had people who were directly employed by the coal mines or employed in industries that supported the coal mines or the coal miners. And because of changes in the mining economy, that's just not what it used to be. There's still a fair bit of coal being mined down here in southwest Virginia, but I think not as much as, as was in, and the employment for people mining is not there as it was once upon a time. And we have thus far been unable to replace what had been the central driving engine of our economy throughout southwest Virginia with something else. We are trying, we're doing our best, our leadership down here is doing everything they can to try to bring in new industries and to bring in new businesses. I know that a lot of organizations down here are focused in on that and trying to work on that. But of course, we're not here to talk about the overall economy of southwest Virginia, although we can't talk about this issue of large population legal deserts down here without talking about that. That's, that's very important. Now, I will also say however, with regards to the overall larger population, one of the major problems that I'm seeing is the graduates of the Virginia law schools are just not staying in Virginia for whatever reason. And I'm hearing different reasons for that. Let's just say, for example, University of Virginia. And David, you and I have talked about this statistic quite a bit. And I've heard, did we ever determine if this was this year's class or last year's?
This year's class was 17.
17 out of 300, thereabouts? So the University of Virginia, which is generally regarded as the premier law school in the state, not, wasn't my last law school, but it's generally regarded as the premier law school in the state. That's where I went undergrad. 300 law graduates, and of those, two years ago it was 13. So we're showing a slight upward trend. This year, 17 of their 300 or so law graduates took the Virginia Bar. And of course, you can't practice, at least not immediately, in Virginia unless you take and pass the Virginia State Bar exam. So we just don't have this, this fund of attorneys who are coming in. And then I suspect that those attorneys who graduated from the University of Virginia, I'm trying to think who the last University of Virginia graduate we had come down here was. Might have been Ryan Comer, who's up there in Marion, who has a practice and teaches part-time down at the Appalachian School of Law. But most of those graduates, I think, are probably joining largeish firms primarily in the DC area. But even then, that's, that's not enough people to replace the retirements and departures of other attorneys throughout the Commonwealth. Now, down here in southwest Virginia, we have issues with access and we have issues with our attorney population. But I will say that those problems would be much worse if not for the establishment of the Appalachian School of Law in Grundy back in 1997. The first class, I don't know if they actually marked their founding date as 1997, but I know that's when they enrolled their first students. And their first graduating class was in 2000. And if not for the graduates of the Appalachian School of Law, many fine attorneys, our problems with, with our lawyer population here in far southwest Virginia would be even worse than what we have right now. And the disturbing thing that I'm hearing and have seen involving the law school, and this is, this is not a criticism of the law school at all, is more and more of the students who enroll in that law school are not doing so with an eye towards staying in the Cumberland region, staying in southwest Virginia or in the surrounding areas of East Tennessee, you know, the part of eastern Kentucky, western North Carolina, southern West Virginia. When I was down there for, I think it was Old Dominion Bar Association event a few months ago, several of the students came in on Saturday morning to hear some speakers. And I was talking to some of the students about where, you know, where they were from. Where are you from? What are you doing down here in Grundy? What are your plans after graduation? You know, these students were from far and wide, which in some ways is a very good thing. We had students from Michigan, I think there was one student maybe from Alaska who I spoke to at that thing. But these students are generally planning to either go back to Michigan or go back to Alaska or go back to some other place like that. So these are not students who intend to come down here into the coalfields, the former coalfields, however you want to look at it, and practice law. So while the law school down here has helped us quite a bit in preventing an apocalypse of legal access and legal services, the pipeline that we had several years ago has dried up and those, those students are not staying. Now, I know that the dean over there at the law school, who we'll see this afternoon, Colonel Western, is working to try to come up with a way to stem the tide and to encourage more of the students to look into practicing in these underserved areas. And I know that's part of his, his mission. I guess we need to try to figure out some ways that we can encourage that and we can facilitate that and we can assist that. Because I think otherwise, we're going to have a, we have a real problem on our hands with access right now, but we're going to have, have a, a true market failure down here if we are unable to bring in additional attorneys to come in here and, and stand in the gap here. So what are the needs that we have down here in southwest Virginia for attorneys? It seems to me that most of the attorneys that are setting up practices or that are joining other small practices down here in southwest Virginia are engaged in a few practice areas. And I would say these are, these are kind of the low-hanging fruit in terms of how easy it is to get started in those practice areas. You know, they'll hang a shingle and they'll, you know, start engaging in domestic relations services, criminal defense services, you know, things like that. They'll attempt to do a little bit of personal injury practice. Everyone wants to get some personal injury cases coming in the door. But then there's a lot of other things that they are just not interested in doing or they don't know how to do, some more technical things. I know, for example, real estate transactions. There is such a scarcity right now of attorneys who are engaged in real estate practice down here in southwest Virginia. Now, there's a lot of very fine attorneys who are performing those services. Right here in Abingdon, my old law partner and great friend Phil Pearl is, he does closings. Brian Ely does closings, does some, some corporate work. But as far as I know, they're the only two that are down here in Abingdon, where there's a lot of activity in the real estate market. I know in Russell County, there's one attorney who's doing real estate closings that I'm aware of. If anyone else, if I'm mistaken in that, I do apologize. But if there's anybody else doing real estate closings over there, they're certainly not doing it at any scale or any large amount of them.
Bruce, do you have any knowledge of how many attorneys are willing to do guardian ad litem work?
Well, that's a real problem and that's a growing problem because the attorneys down here are just not willing to do that. So I know here in Washington County, they're bringing in guardians ad litem from other areas to come in and take these cases because the attorneys down here are just not willing to do that sort of work. And there's a real need for that because unfortunately, we do have a lot of kids that end up in foster care, which drives most of that work.
So Bruce, do you think it's the money or do you think it's the work?
I think probably both. But I think that, I think if, if we could increase the funding for those cases, I think people could learn to tolerate the work better. But without the financial incentive to do that work. And in fact, I was just talking about this with an attorney from Wise yesterday or two days ago. And I won't, I won't name him, I won't dime him out on this. But you know, he and I were talking about, you know, guardian, guardianship work. And you know, both of us used to do a fair bit of guardian work. And I, and neither one of us does much of any of that unless some judge calls me and just begs me to do it. I don't think judges beg, I wouldn't think a judge beg, but you know what I'm saying. Maybe I should start now, I guess I should start. But you know, and this attorney said to me, he said, every time I glance at one of these guardian ad litem files, I'm losing money. I am not doing the things I need to do to keep my law office open, keep the lights on and the water flowing. And, and I think that's true. A lot of this is financial, you know, guardians ad litem get paid, I think it's still, is it $55?
I think it's $55.
Yeah.
I think, what is it, court time, 75?
I think it's 75. And that's, that's actual in-court time standing in front of the judge. And that's still, that seems like a lot to someone who's earning minimum wage on the street. And it is, but for a law office, you have to take into account, well, this is not money that's just flowing directly into my pocket. There are a lot of expenses that go into having law, having any kind of business. And so, go ahead.
So let me, I'm asking this because I truly have no idea. If one were to charge a market rate in either Wise County or Abingdon for the work that a GAL does, what might that hourly rate be?
Oh my gosh, that's a really good question. Now, obviously here in far southwest Virginia, because of how the economy works out here, you know, we're not going to have the billable hour that someone up in Fairfax is going to have. Or even, or in Richmond or in Virginia Beach, or really even in Roanoke. I hear sometimes about what the hourly billable rate for Roanoke attorneys is. And I'm trying to fix mine somewhere in that range, maybe, maybe a little bit lower. And of course, it varies case by case because of the client base that we have down here. But it's certainly going to be much higher than $55 or $75 an hour. It, that just, that discourages people from doing it and it's always going to discourage people. And it's going to get worse and it hasn't gone up in 20 years. I think there was an increase to $75 for, no, I think it's always been $75 or it has been for a number of years. I think it was just recently changed to allow the actual time that you're spending with your ward to bill at $75 an hour. But, and that's an important part of the work for the guardian ad litem. But that's only really a, I don't want to say a small part, but that's not a huge percentage of the amount of time that a guardian has to spend on the file to meet those GAL standards and to honestly adequately check off the box, the boxes on the checklist that every guardian is supposed to submit every day.
Thank you.
No problem, no problem. So we, we have a lot of problems with, with this down here. I think as far as what our solutions are, obviously that's, that's the work of the committees to determine what those solutions are. Couple of observations, and I think you've hit on one of the big problems, which is just funding. And I think one of the reasons, the major reason why you have attorneys who are coming out of, let's just say, I'm not picking on the University of Virginia, which is a wonderful, wonderful institution, and I have a degree from there. But attorneys coming out of the University of Virginia, and many attorneys come out of law school now with these mountains of student loan debt, several hundred thousand dollars to get a legal education from these places. I don't know what it costs to go to the University of Virginia and to live up there in Charlottesville for a year. I know in undergraduate education, as I have two boys who will be enrolling in school in the next few years, my son Clark is a junior. He's here in the building right now. He's in a program called HEALS. I think they call it the lab school. But the kids that are in that are kids who are interested in healthcare professions. He wants, at this point in his life... He wants, at this point in his life, he wants to be a medical doctor. They come here for the first part of the day, and then he goes to the high school at the end of the day for his English class and for his band class. And his band, they were grand champions at the Chill Howie Apple Festival, make up which was last night, it was. It was moved because of the recent natural disaster we had with the flooding caused by Hurricane Helene. But he wants to go to school, and this is a source of great shame and consternation for me, is that he wants to go to Duke. Not that Duke's not a fine school, but it will send me into poverty if he does that, because we did the tour, and it's about a hundred thousand dollars a year for an undergraduate education at Duke, which is a lot. So I only mention this because people coming out of law school have the, have a monkey on their back right from the start, which is, they owe, they have to pay for that education. And it's a huge percentage of students who are coming out with these huge debt loads. Is it 90% of students coming out of law school?
I was just looking at the ABA information. I don't know the answer to that, but I'll find out.
Yeah. It's a lot, it's a lot. And so if you're coming out of out of law school and you're thinking, well, should I come to southwest Virginia and do the Lord's work down here in coalfields, former coalfields, or should I go make one of these enormous associate salaries with a large firm in DC or New York, or LA, or even Atlanta? You know, they make the decision, or maybe even some attorneys come out and say, well, I'm going to go work for a largish firm in a large metro area for a number of years, pay off my student loans, save some money, and then I'm going to come back to my people down here in southwest Virginia and help out. And of course, then, they just get on track at a large firm, or they, you know, they dangle a partnership, they have that carrot out there on the the end of the fishing line for them, and then they end up sticking around and staying. And that's not a criticism of that. People can make their own decisions and determine the course of their own lives, but.
This presentation is brought to you by.
It's not infographic, it's not, but you were right, it's 90% of law students coming out of law school have some form of student loan debt.
And it's generally big. Now, some of the schools are working on that with regards to undergraduate education. I know in particular, and I'm not plugging Johns Hopkins, I'm not a paid endorser of Johns Hopkins, but they have that Bloomberg Scholarship at Johns Hopkins, and Michael Berg, I think he donated.
A billion?
Yeah, with the idea that it would throw off about 100 million in income every year. And the idea with that is that it would fund all of the financial need of anyone who wants to go there above and beyond what they can can't pay, and they have a formula to determine what that student can or should be able to pay. That student, and really, that student's family can or should be able to pay. So I think that's a huge problem right there, is just the reality of how much it costs to get the education these days. It's it's many times more than it was even above and beyond, if you're just looking at inflation and the cost of living, what it was when I was in school, 25 or however many years, 25, 30 years ago.
Bruce, let me acknowledge, of course, the the big barrier of law school cost. Do lawyers in this area make any use of non-attorney professionals in doing legal work, paralegals who work for them? Do you perceive a larger role that they could play? Would non-attorney guardians ad litem be able to do an adequate job?
You know, that's a good question. I think there's probably reasons why we have tapped attorneys to do that job historically, other than that they're just the people who were available and were present in the courthouses and in the, in the courts at the time. There are advocates who are not guardians ad litem. Of course, the code is set up in places and contemplates guardians ad litem. But we have groups like CASA, which is, you know, court-appointed special advocates, and there's, you know, we have our, you know, departments of social services who who are a component of the system and who work to look out for the needs of kids and these minors. But there are big swathes of the system that are are made specifically for the guardians ad litem, and I think there has to be some value to that training in doing that job. I don't know, it's probably something that would warrant further study, but I think we would have to maybe see it in action somewhere in a pilot program before I commented on that. There's plenty of empathetic people who can and do understand the needs of these kids and what they would need to, what, which of their needs need to be advocated to the courts and to the other parties in a case? I think it's certainly there is looking at. But of course, you know, the attorneys that are doing that work now will walk because you're taking away from their duty, even though they're running away from that sector of practice in growth right now.
When we were in Danville recently, we heard from, it sounds like just one attorney who was willing to do GAL work in Danville and the surrounding counties, she's the only one.
And she's not practicing other than as a GAL.
Yeah.
And she'd do that because she is not a sole breadwinner, or at a point in her life where she needs, frankly, more than 55 dollars.
Right. That's right, but there, you know, the problem with that is, there's just not a lot of people that are in that category here or anywhere else now. You know, it'd be nice, you know, my mother is is 83 years old, and she's retired school principal, and she and dad are both retired school principals, which was just brutal growing up. No, I'm kidding, it was wonderful parents, and they were, they did, they did what they could with me. Mama tried, as they say, right? But mom retired 30 years ago, and as soon as she retired, she started subbing and then taking long-term subs, and eventually, they created an Ethan reading intervention position for her at the school. She goes to the school every day at 83 years old and teaches kids and loves it. And for her, you know, she says, it's one thing to work because you have to, it's another thing to work if you want to. And she worked because she wants to, she's great at it, she loves the kids, and the kids love her. And, you know, mom would be, if she were a little bit younger, you know, she's the sort of person that could potentially do this non-attorney guardian ad litem work that we're talking about having someone do. Probably not at this stage in her life, but she would be perfect for that because of her, her training, her decades of involvement with kids, her work as a school administrator. But people like mom are going to be hard to find. But since my my mother is one of one, so.
I'd like to meet her.
Right, she's wonderful, I'll make that happen sometime.
Okay, thank you. So anything else that you haven't touched on so far?
I'm trying to think what I have covered. I could, as as you know, David, you and I can talk, we are both real passionate, everybody in this room, I think, is very passionate about this issue, and we could talk about this for a good long while here. But are there any other, Chris, can you think of any areas that I haven't hit on here today with this, especially in southwest Virginia, that I might be able to address?
Do you feel like the number of attorneys in southwest Virginia is skewed because a lot of them are in government work? You know, so they're not necessarily available to serve the larger public because they're a county attorney, or a city attorney, or a Commonwealth's attorney?
Sure, sure. And I'll say this, there are a lot more of those sorts of attorneys now than there used to be when I started. I don't want to talk too much about myself here, because it's quite boring, and I don't want people to tune out or fall asleep while I'm doing this, but I started out practicing in Charlottesville with a little firm. Some of my old fraternity brothers and I set up a practice, and we were going to become dot-com millionaires before we turned 30. We were going to represent these little tech companies that had spun out of the university up there, or had started, been started by students there at the university. And a lot of those, there were a lot of those companies, there were a lot of opportunities like that. And we had a little office just down the street from the law school there, next to Barrett Road Shopping Center. And it was a great experience for me at 25 years old to start that out, but it became apparent to me very quickly that the attorneys there were great people, but we just, we had a lot of business, but we didn't have a lot of paying business up there, unfortunately. So I wound up doing other things. I got on the court-appointed list in Green County, and Nelson County, and a bunch of other areas, and, boy, those were some eye-opening experiences doing that that sort of work. Not enough to scare me off of it, though. I say, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but not enough to scare me off of it. But I wound up, my my law partner's been in different directions. The one fellow who had worked for a large DC firm, he went into government service, he had, he had worked for a large DC firm and didn't like it and wanted to try it with us, and he's been very happy working for the federal government for the last 20, 25 years. My other partner who I grew up with over in Richlands, he stayed up there, and he has a very successful practice up there. He engages primarily in domestic relations practice, and he has some other components to it. He and I just taught a CLE on representing media mavericks up in Charlottesville not too long ago. But, which I think is also available on demand for Virginia CLE, if anyone's interested. And I don't get a royalty from that, but I thought it was a pretty interesting program. But I came back down, my my point in giving my little biography here is, I came back down here to southwest Virginia to to hide from my predators, number one, that didn't really come down to hide from my predators. But I came back down here to pursue one opportunity, and I was going to go work in-house with a company. And instead, I wound up getting hired as assistant Commonwealth's attorney over in Buchanan County. And I worked over there for two years, I had the great opportunity to teach over there at the law school. I was hired by my friend, the late lamented Dean Tony Suton, who was one of the victims of the tragic shooting that we had down there in 20, or 2002. Wonderful, wonderful man, one of the best, best people I've ever met, Tony Suton. But at the time, there was the elected Commonwealth's attorney and me, and we had one attorney who had a grant to prosecute domestic violence cases. And he would come one day a week, that's my good friend Shannon Cook, whose practice is over in Cedar Grove, he would come down one day a week to prosecute domestic violence cases. He and I would go down to juvenile court together on Tuesdays and split up that dock. So at the time, that was was pretty standard for the prosecutor's offices down here. In the areas where they're, they had a city attorney, or they had a county attorney, they had a county attorney, they had a city attorney, the prosecutor's offices, some of them were still part-time. I think Russell County was still a part-time office, that was a part-time position. And that's changed now. So there are more jobs in the public sector down here than there used to be. I was talking about this with another attorney just the other day, we, an attorney from Wise, we have, or Wise, as some of you out of the way from southwest Virginia might say, we say Wise, we draw that I out down here, it's our regional dialect. So I think that's a, that's a really good point, Chris. I think you do have people that that get into that practice. There are some people, I think, who are just start out, they're just really passionate about that type of work and get into it. I think some investigate those opportunities because that's what's available in some places, and there there are more prosecutor jobs than there used to be. And I think when you get into those those areas of practice, those are great, those are noble areas of practice, you have, you know, your state benefits, which are very nice to have, speaking of someone who is self-funding his own retirement, I wish someone else was doing that for me, but that's not the way the world works. So I think there is, there is something to be said for that. I think some of the attorneys who come out and want to stay in southwest Virginia do end up getting soft up by those jobs, and then they tend to stay. I know I've had some, I've had several attorneys who have worked with me in my firm over the years, and I had one associate who's now, who did a great job, he's now the county attorney of Penaswell County, Chase Collins, he's a wonderful attorney, I wish he'd stayed with me, and I understand, though, why he took the job that he took. Mike Worrell is deputy Commonwealth's attorney of Pen Smith County, and he's, you know, very happy doing that. I had one attorney who worked with me and left to go work with Legal Aid, but that was because she's a real true believer in the mission of Legal Aid and wanted to do that rather than engage in the private practice. Of course, she's since left and is now clerking for a federal judge, so different people go off and do different things, but I think there is certainly a lure to that, and that certainly does lure some attorneys away from getting involved in the private practice and the way that we're talking about.
I'd like to ask my colleagues if they have anything else they wanted to ask Bruce about.
When the Commonwealth attorneys or the prosecutors were part-time, were they engaged in private practice as well?
They were.
So maybe doing the real estate work, or doing the life planning work? And did that change just because there aren't any more part-time positions? Or did the population get large enough that by statute, they can't do it anymore? Do you know?
So the question is, is it because they they're just not able to engage in that practice if they're full-time?
Right.
Or, okay, I, I think that's, that's certainly a component to it, but I think a lot of those attorneys were glad to to step away from those private practices and only have to focus on on the prosecution. Roy Evans, who was the Commonwealth's attorney up in Smith County for many years, I know he had a private practice for the first several, several years that he was in that job up there, and and I've talked with him about that, and I don't think that he shed too many tears when he had to give up his private practice. I know Mike Bush, who used to be the Commonwealth's attorney, he was Commonwealth's attorney in Smith County, or, sorry, forgive me, Russell County, when he, when I started, he gave up his private practice, I don't think he was too upset about doing that. Jerry Wolfe, who was, is Commonwealth's attorney now over in Bristol, he had been, I don't think he was ever part-time in that, but he had been a private practitioner, and I don't, I don't think he shed too many tears when he had to give up his private practice. We were talking one day about the different colors he put his files in, and I know he was, he was very glad to not have to keep up with the different colors for the types of cases. Just one color of files now over in his prosecutor's office over there.
Bruce, thank you so much for all the thought and effort you're putting into this process.
Sure, thank you, David. Thanks, everyone, for being here today. And I know I had heard from a number of my colleagues who wanted to come and had court appearances. I know one in particular called me and had a doctor's appointment that she had to go to, I'm not sure if it was for her or for one of her kids. But there are other people who would have liked to have been here today, who have concerns about these issues, about this issue, and just were not able to be here today. So I can tell you that the population down here is very interested in this issue, the attorneys are very concerned about this issue, I think the attorneys down here are very concerned about about the law, and about the future of the practice of law down here in southwest Virginia, and about access to justice, and they're, they're very anxious for us to help them find some solution.
And I'd just like to encourage.
Ann, can we get you in front of the microphone?
Sure.
Yeah.
So I'd just like to encourage you, when you do come across someone who wished they could have come and had some really important things they wanted to say, this is an open process that is still gathering this information. Just because we're out of town tomorrow doesn't mean we aren't interested in gathering those insights. So there is a link on the flyer to take the survey and to express whatever ideas, identifying problems, but also identifying solutions. So I'd really encourage anyone that you come across in the next few days who says, oh, how did it go? I missed my chance, to say something, you can say, au contraire, I actually have a way for you to be a part of this conversation going forward.
Okay.
That's super important.
That's right.
Thank you, Ann. Yeah, we did receive several, five comments online from people, most of whom did not want to travel here from, from further away, travel for the hearing, but one had commented from a women's resource center of New River Valley, and so, I'm sorry, she wasn't, not able to make it, we'll follow up with them. I also tried, I'll talk to the chair of the Chamber of Commerce Board here, who also had a conflict this morning, but said, she worked in farm credit, and says that her farmer customers cannot find legal help for routine problems so often. And so there's clearly a strong need here.
Absolutely. And, you know, the Legal Aid down here, I think I started to talk about this earlier, they do a tremendous job in southwest Virginia. Of course, they're limited by statute as to what they can do, and by the terms of their grants, as to the sorts of areas of practice that they can get involved in. And, you know, frankly, there's just not enough of them anyway for what their, their limited role is, and that's, that's the never-ending battle that we fight with them, keeping, keeping attorneys on board there, for some of them to leave and then come back. But there are definitely a lot of, there are downsides to being engaged in the private practice of law, for sure. You do end up with some, some very long hours, sometimes it's unpredictably long hours.
Let me ask one more question.
Sure.
To what extent do you think, I'm thinking maybe in particular of trust in the states, you don't actually need to be in the county, in the city, maybe even in the circuit, to do that work for someone, right? I mean, you could literally phone it in, you could do it by Zoom, you could do it, you know, there are different ways of handling that. Other practices, obviously, a court practice, that's going to be more challenging. But I wonder to what extent we're not leveraging technology as well as we could, not so much in, well, I mean, A, in a pro bono area. I mean, I'm about to do work with a woman who's having a problem with her mortgage company in Powhatan, and I live in Fairfax. I will probably never meet her. I will, I may Zoom with her, we will exchange a lot of emails and some phone calls.
That's really interesting, and I have some direct experience with that. At William &amp; Mary Law School, they have a clinic that works on guardianships and conservatorships for older folk and for incapacitated adults. And I have helped out with a few of those, working with an attorney who is a faculty member now at William &amp; Mary, in obtaining those guardianships and conservatorships out in a couple of different places, Russell County, maybe Smith County was another one. And that attorney, who is faculty member at William &amp; Mary, obviously, it would have been very inconvenient for him to have to travel all the way from Williamsburg out here in southwest Virginia. As lovely of a drive as it would have been, as much, you know, downhill mountain hospitality as we would have shown him, he just, he was able to appear remotely. And I think some judges are into that, and some judges, they like to see the attorney in person. I, of course, was able to be at those hearings as the guardian ad litem for the incapacitated adult in person, and so that, that satisfied the judge. But that's a good thought to maybe expand that type of access for those types of practice areas. Probably would be worthwhile to sit down and just look at, this, this is the practice of law. These are the areas that comprise the practice of law. These are the areas where we're hurting down here in southwest Virginia, and then these are the areas where someone in Williamsburg, or someone in Charlottesville, or someone in Fairfax could engage in this type of practice. Of course, finding the people to do that in these other parts of the world, too, there's maybe some challenges that are going to be inherent with that, too, because, you know, we're moving away in the practice of law from the billable hour, who should be moving away from the billable hour in law places. But you know, the billable hour in Fairfax is, is, I don't want to say more valuable, but it's, it's, the dollar sign on it is a much higher number than it is in, even in Roanoke or down here in far southwest Virginia. So that may, that may be another barrier we encounter when we.
I laughed a little bit when you talked about moving away from the billable hour. I had an uncle who practiced law for many years in a rural area, and he thought the billable hour was a terrible idea. I mean, because, you know, 70 years ago, that wasn't common, you know? I'll do your will for, in those days, probably 75 bucks, or divorce for 100, or whatever. It wasn't, it wasn't an hourly thing, so it's just that the pendulum never stops in the middle.
That's right. I remember an attorney who since passed away.
Last story.
Okay. Sure, and I'll make this, sorry about that, David, but I remember an attorney down here who, pretty prominent attorney, he, we got him Carl McAfee, who represented Francis Carey Powers in the U2 incident. He, his dad, Francis Carey Powers' father hired Carl to go over and participate in the Soviet show trial, you know, in the spying case, the U2 incident. But Carl told me that the first will he ever did in his law office down in Powne, I think he said he charged $5 for it. $5. And that was wild.
Okay. Thank you so much again, Bruce. Thank you for everybody who helped put this on today, and our online audience, which is, I think Sally at the moment, thank you for just taking it out, too. So, so we're done for this morning, and we will be in Grundy at 3:45 this afternoon.
David, I'll collect some questions from some people who can't be there this afternoon, and I'll see, if you want, we can see if we can address those down there in Grundy today.
That'd be great, sure.
And you'll get to see our, have you been to law school down there now?
Yes.
I know David has, David, David's been there with me, so I can.